The fifth plenary meeting of the 11th Emergency Special Session of the General Assembly is called to order. The Assembly will continue its consideration of Agenda Item 5 entitled, later dated 28 February 2014, from the permanent representative of Ukraine to the United Nations, addressed to the President of the Security Council, S/2014/136. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Solomon Islands.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, Mr. Secretary-General, excellencies. I take the floor to speak on this important agenda in my national capacity. Solomon Islands is following with great concern the developments in Ukraine and deeply worried about the worsening situation. As a peace-loving nation, Solomon Islands reiterated its principled position for peaceful coexistence, non-interference, refrain from the use of threat or force against the territorial integrity of any state. We deeply regret the intervention into Ukraine by its neighbor, the Russian Federation, and call for immediate de-escalation of the situation. In that respect, we call on all to exercise maximum restraint, put aside all provocation, and restore our faith in our rule-based international order as we preserve and respect Ukraine's independence, sovereignty, and territorial integrity. Solomon Islands calls on all parties to settle international disputes by peaceful means. We welcome talks currently taking place between Ukraine and the Russian Federation. We call on all parties to listen more and better understand each other. We trust that this dialogue will bring a glimmer of hope for a sustainable peaceful outcome. We fully support efforts made by the UN Secretary-General and call for a global unified approach to support the talks, embracing diplomacy and dialogue over confrontation and hostile postures in Ukraine and the region. Solomon Islands further call on all countries to preserve the principles, spirit, and purpose of the United Nations Charter with open hands of friendship and not with a clenched fist. We in the present must look to the past as we chart our way forward. We must never forget: the United Nation was created under the assistance of a world war. My people of Solomon Islands have lived through what consequences a world war can bring. Never again must a war go through another. Never again must humankind suffer its brutal consequences. We are already inundated with global challenges, including the COVID-19 pandemic, climate change, and seal ever rise. As a small, vulnerable state, Solomon Islands is deeply concerned that the situation in Ukraine is diverting much needed attention to a global development agenda as we continue to combat climate change, improve the quality of all people, and deliver on the Sustainable Development Goals and the 2030 Agenda. Solomon Islands stand in solidarity with all who have lost loved ones and express great concern on the worsening humanitarian situation. We commend initiatives of neighboring states to protect lives of the vulnerable population. We need each other more during this difficult period. Let us use the multilateral tools available to seek permanent peace, for the stakes are just too high if we fail. Solomon Islands will vote in support of this resolution. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Solomon Islands. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Myanmar.
Mr. President, Mr. Secretary-General, at the outset, we welcome the convening of this Emergency Special Session. We thank you, Mr. President and Mr. Secretary-General, in this regard. This Emergency Special Session is timely, and it would allow all countries, small and big, to raise our voices on the serious situation Ukraine is facing and our concern in the state affairs of this universal organ, the United Nations. Myanmar always adheres to and takes firm possession on the territorial integrity, independence, and sovereignty of all countries. Therefore, Myanmar condemns the invasion of Ukraine and provokes attacks against the people of Ukraine. These acts are flagrant violation of the United Nations Charter and international law. Myanmar calls on to respect the sovereignty, independence, and territorial integrity of Ukraine. We have been following with great concern the situation on the ground in Ukraine. It is regrettable that the situation is further escalating with intensifying attacks of the Russian Federation. As a result, many people have been killed and hundreds of thousands of people left their home. The people are suffering even in the severe cold weather. We call on immediate cessation of hostilities and attacks on Ukraine. Myanmar understands and shares more than others the suffering that the people of Ukraine are encountering. The people of Myanmar are facing similar horrible suffering resulted from the inhumane acts, atrocities, crimes against humanity committed by the Myanmar military. Due to the military's excessive use of force and indiscriminate attacks on people as well as their inhumane and butcher acts, many houses, religious facilities, healthcare facilities, schools, and families have been destroyed. Accordingly, hundreds of thousands of people have to leave their respective places and became displaced people in addition to number of people dead and injured. The displaced people and victims include people from vulnerable groups such as people with disability, elderly people, women, girls, and children. I wish to commend the neighboring countries of Ukraine which opened their borders and extend one reception of Ukrainians and other nations who escaped from the terrifying attacks. We also thank all member states who support Ukraine in every possible way. I appeal them to continue to do so and do more. Mr. President, the UN Charter clearly begins with a quote: "We, the peoples of the United Nations, determine to save succeeding generations from the scourge of war." I wish to further recall that quote. "We, the peoples of the United Nations, to unite our strength to maintain international peace and security and to ensure by the observance of principles and the institutions of method that enforced should not be used safe in the common interest." Excellencies, dear colleagues, it is time for all of us to stand with justice and stand with the principle of the UN Charter. Myanmar stands in solidarity with the people of Ukraine. In doing so, Myanmar co-sponsor the draft resolution and will vote yes. Justice, freedom, and peace must prevail all over the world. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Myanmar. And I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Pakistan.
Mr. President, Pakistan is committed to the fundamental principles of the UN Charter: self-determination of peoples, non-use or threat of use of force, sovereignty and territorial integrity of states, and specific settlement of disputes. Equally, Pakistan upholds the principle of equal and indivisible security for all. These principles must be consistently and universally respected. Mr. President, Pakistan remains deeply concerned at the recent turn of events. This reflects a failure of diplomacy. Prime Minister Imran Khan has regretted the latest situation between Russia and Ukraine and said that Pakistan hoped that diplomacy could avert military conflict. We have since repeatedly stressed the need for de-escalation, renewed negotiations, sustained dialogue, and continuous diplomacy. All efforts must be made to avoid further escalation of violence and loss of life as well as military, political, and economic tensions which can pose an unprecedented threat to international peace and security and global economic stability. As consistently underlined by Prime Minister Imran Khan, the developing countries are hit the hardest economically by conflict anywhere. We hope that the talks initiated between the representatives of the Russian Federation and Ukraine will succeed in bringing about a cessation of hostilities and normalization of the situation. A diplomatic solution in accordance with relevant multilateral agreements, international law, and the provisions of the UN Charter is indispensable. Pakistan also supports all efforts to provide humanitarian relief to civilians in the affected areas. The government of Pakistan is most concerned about the safety and welfare of Pakistani citizens and students in Ukraine. The majority of them have been evacuated. Those who remain will be evacuated soonest. We appreciate the cooperation of the Ukrainian authorities as well as the Polish, Romanian, and Hungarian governments in this context. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Pakistan. And I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Djibouti.
Mr. President, Mr. Secretary-General, at the outset, Djibouti welcomes the convening of this Emergency Special Session of the United Nations General Assembly to address an urgent matter: the unprovoked aggression against Ukraine. It is a matter of deep regret that the Security Council failed to act in unison after the veto cast by Russia, thus effectively undermining the capacity of this vital organ to exercise its primary responsibility for the maintenance of peace and security. We often lament the inability of the Council to respond decisively to emergent crises. The refusal expressed by a majority of member states to be paralyzed into inaction is a testament to the commitment of member states to ensure that the UN remains relevant in the face of vexing and complex security challenges. Djibouti unequivocally condemns what is, in our view, constitutes an egregious breach of international law and the most fundamental principles of the United Nations Charter, in particular the obligation of all states under Article 2 of the United Nations Charter to refrain in their international relations from the threat or use of force against the territorial integrity or political independence of any state. If a country has legitimate security concerns, we urge that country to prioritize using tools as expressly contemplated by Article 33 of the Charter, which obligates parties to a dispute that is likely to endanger peace and security to seek its solution among other means: negotiation, mediation, arbitration, or judicial settlement. We welcome the offer of good offices made by the Secretary-General and reiterate the call by the African Union to establish an immediate ceasefire and to open political negotiations without delay under the auspices of the United Nations in order to preserve the world from the consequences of planetary conflict. No argument, no pretext can justify the use of force, the all-eyed war, and the brutal violence unleashed on Ukraine and its people. Mr. President, we are appalled by the continued attacks targeting civilians and civilian infrastructure. We are heartsick to watch the gut-wrenching images of civilians fleeing the violence at sinking refuge in neighboring countries. We echo the call made by the Emergency Relief Coordinator and the High Commissioner for Refugees for unimpeded humanitarian access so that aid is delivered to those in need. Ukrainians may have decided to valiantly defend their country and not surrender, but if the war does not stop now, they may not survive. As a distinguished Ukrainian representative powerfully stated, if Ukraine does not survive, international law will not survive. The aggression against Ukraine places under stress the system of international law and international relations that the Charter put into place. Let us not allow decades of efforts to strengthen the rule of law and revitalize multilateralism go down the drain. Djibouti will therefore vote yes to reaffirm its solidarity to the people of Ukraine. It will vote yes to uphold the UN Charter. It will vote yes to reject the use of armed force under any pretext in aggression against a sovereign country. It will vote yes in support to the sanctity of borders. Monsieur le Président?
Mr. President, we are reassured by the measures taken to deal with the discriminatory acts against Africans seeking refuge. However, we are alarmed at the persistent representations of negativity towards Africans and the statements by so-called experts who are drawing distinctions between refugees fleeing the conflict in the Middle East and those fleeing the conflict in Ukraine. Wars are the same regardless of where they are, and they always lead to the same devastating consequences. We are at a critical moment in the history of the United Nations, and we must put an end to all conflicts and do everything to prevent any further conflicts. It is within our reach, and we do have the resources. Let us mobilize a political will to put an end to them. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Djibouti. And I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Bhutan.
Mr. President, Mr. Secretary-General, excellencies. We meet today in this August Assembly for the 11th Emergency Special Session of the General Assembly to address the alarming situation in Ukraine, a fellow member state of our United Nations. It is significant that owing to deadlock in the UN Security Council, this is the first time in 40 years that the provisions of the Uniting for Peace Resolution are being invoked. Bhutan has closely observed with deep concern the rapidly escalating conflict on the ground. We join others in calling for the respect of Ukraine's sovereignty, independence, and territorial integrity within its internationally recognized borders. Perched atop the Himalayas, even the folds of our mighty mountains cannot shield us from the reverberations of events thousands of miles away. Today, core principles of the UN Charter and a rules-based international order are at stake, endangering international peace and security far beyond the borders of Ukraine and Europe. Mr. President, each and every one of us, big and small, rich and poor alike, have, on admission to the United Nations, ascribed to the purposes and principles enshrined in the Charter. Bhutan made that solemn pledge over 50 years ago. These are principles all member states are beholden to, but for small states, they serve as the guarantor of our existence. Bhutan is a small and peace-loving country, firmly avowed to peaceful coexistence and good neighborly relations between states. Bhutan adds its voice to the chorus within this hall in defense of the UN Charter, in defense of the principles of sovereignty, independence, and territorial integrity of all countries. The threat or use of force and acts of aggression against another sovereign state can never be accepted. We cannot condone the unilateral redrawing of international borders. Bhutan will therefore support the resolution which is now before the Assembly, and in doing so, we reaffirm the call for the respect of international law and the core principles of the UN Charter. In closing, Mr. President, Bhutan expresses its regret at the reports of growing numbers of casualties and loss of innocent lives as a result of the crisis in Ukraine. Our hearts and prayers go out to the families of those who have lost their lives in the escalating conflict and the hundreds of thousands of others who have been displaced and suffer in its wake. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Bhutan. And I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Laos People's Democratic Republic.
Mr. President, Mr. Secretary-General, as a peace-loving nation, the Laotian People's Party firmly upholds the principles of the United Nations Charter and its obligation under the international law. Towards this end, the Laotian People's Party has continued to pursue its consistent policy of peace, independence, friendship, and cooperation with all nations. As a country previously suffered from the scourge of war, the Laotian People's Party knows too well the endless negative consequences it will cause to the innocent lives. We believe what is entailing is not of the interest to any party. The Laotian People's Party has been closely following the current developments in Ukraine, which is complex and fragile. We commend the UN and countries which have offered humanitarian assistance to the affected people. Mr. President, we remain skeptical of the unilateral sanction. On the contrary, we would also be mindful that the sanctions imposed could entail long-term impact on innocent people, including the global community at large, especially during the pandemic period. Therefore, we call on all parties concerned to refrain from any action that could further fuel the escalation of tension and seek peaceful solutions and restore peace and security. Towards this end, we support the ongoing effort to find a peaceful settlement to this situation through diplomatic means, including the recent peaceful negotiation held at the border of Barros. It is important that legitimate security concerns of all parties be taken into account. Mr. President, we have heard at this Emergency Special Session during the past two days divergent views and opinions. Nevertheless, one common call loudly echoed in this Assembly Hall is the call for peace, which can only be achieved through diplomatic means. It is our fervent hope that through this diplomatic effort, peace can be restored, peace which constitutes the heart and soul of our organizations, United Nations. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Laos People's Democratic Republic. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Cambodia.
Mr. President, Mr. Secretary-General, Cambodia expresses grave concern on the situation unfolding and human suffering as well as for the loss of life in Ukraine. We strongly believe that a lasting peace can be achieved only through a peaceful dialogue and negotiation. All parties must ensure that all civilian and civilian infrastructure are protected. Access to humanitarian assistance to the people in and around Ukraine must be ensured during difficult times. Cambodia fully supports the Secretary-General effort in addressing the humanitarian crisis and to find a peaceful solution in Ukraine. On 26 February, the ASEAN Foreign Minister released a statement urging the concerned party to seek a peaceful resolution in accordance with international law, the principles of the UN Charter. Cambodia has its firm position that all member states must respect sovereignty, territorial integrity, and political independence of other member states. With that, Cambodia has co-sponsored the draft resolution and will vote yes. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Cambodia. And now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Azerbaijan.
Mr. President, the situation in and around Ukraine is a source of extreme concern which necessitates urgent actions to de-escalate and find peaceful solution in accordance with international law. Azerbaijan deeply regrets that the ongoing crisis constitutes to cause significant casualties, in particular among civilian population. We express our deep condolences to the families of those perished and wounded. We call for strict adherence to international humanitarian law. Civilian lives and civilian infrastructures must be protected and safeguarded at all times. The evolving humanitarian crisis on the ground requires expedient measures to alleviate the impact of current situation on civilians. Proceeding from this understanding, Azerbaijan has already rendered on a bilateral basis humanitarian assistance of medicine and medical equipment and other first need essentials to the people of Ukraine. This situation needs to be settled through peaceful diplomatic means in full compliance with the norms and principles of international law, guiding interstate relations including respect for the sovereignty, territorial integrity, and inviolability of the people. territorial integrity, and inviolability of borders. Strict compliance with the norms and principles of international law concerning friendly relations and cooperation among states and the fulfillment in good faith of the obligations assumed by states are of the greatest importance for the maintenance of international and regional peace and security. Azerbaijan reiterates its call for dialogue without delay to prevent this situation from the further escalating escalation and underlining the necessity of direct negotiations between the parties. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Azerbaijan. And now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Belarus.
President, Secretary-General, the Republic of Belarus will vote against this draft resolution. We all bear our share of responsibility for what is currently happening in Ukraine. Eight years ago, the Minsk agreements were signed. The Security Council adopted a resolution on this. But not the Security Council, nor the General Assembly, nor the international community as a whole were able to convince or urge the Ukrainian authorities to fulfill the provisions of these documents. Over the last eight years, Ukraine has essentially found itself in a state of civil war. Inasmuch as the Kiev authorities did not wish to sit at the negotiation table with their compatriots from Donetsk and Lugansk, and they refused to take into account their legitimate interests. Over these last eight years, in the Donetsk and Lugansk People's Republics, people have been dying, mainly civilians, the elderly, women and children. Operative paragraph eight of the draft resolution before us hypocritically calls on all parties to fulfill the Minsk agreements. So there is a question then to the sponsors and the co-sponsors of this draft resolution. Where were you all, ladies and gentlemen? Why, over these eight years, have you not been able to urge Kiev to fulfill the provisions of these documents? The United States, Canada, and the EU, who of course believe themselves to be the gold standard of democracy, have exerted cavalier pressure on the UN, the OSCE, the Council of Europe, and on the whole international community, who they could not find the strength or courage in themselves to adequately respond to the criminal activities of the Ukrainian authorities. They ask us, why are you recalling the events of the past now? When, during an armed conflict, people are dying? But actually, our response is a very simple one. Let's look at the real lessons from the events of the Second World War. The international community then didn't realize then that any spark of neo-Nazism in any country needs to be swiftly extinguished. So what is happening today in this room and beyond is another clear demonstration of double standards and a confirmation of these double standards on the side of the USA and their allies, whose crimes have already led to hundreds of thousands of victims in Yugoslavia, in Iraq, Libya, and Afghanistan. We categorically reject accusations against Belarus that we are involved in unlawful use of force against Ukraine. I will let you in on a secret. Yes, we are involved. The president of Belarus, Alexander Lukashenko, personally is sparing no efforts to ensure contact between the Russian and Ukrainian sides. Our involvement today thus goes as far as organizing negotiations between the Russian Federation and Ukraine and doing everything we can to ensure that they are held. We sincerely wish every success to the participants in the negotiations. Many countries in their statements have not said a single word about these negotiations. We understand that they never utter the name of our countries in a positive or even in a neutral tone. We'd like to ask also those people, you, all of you, do you simply not want to mention Belarus? Or do you not wish these negotiations to be successful? As a reaction to the events in Ukraine, some countries reached instinctively for their favorite instrument, sanctions. We would like to caution you, it will be you who will be fully responsible for how the imposition of sanctions, for example, against Belarusian potassium fertilizers will lead to a worsening economic and social problems and a growth in hunger in your own countries and in countries located hundreds of kilometers from Belarus. The sanctions announced are not targeted. They're focused on suffocating the economies and lowering the standard of living of people. The sanctions imposed today, and some people have said that there is an economic war ongoing. This is the worst example of economic and financial terrorism. Representatives of some countries report that their borders are fully open for Ukrainians and foreigners and citizens of third countries to leave Ukraine. On this supposedly open border, I would like to inform you that citizens of Belarus and Russia, in Tahraya, all men over the age of eighteen are facing serious problems when they are trying to leave Ukraine. The Ukrainian authorities are not letting them out, and Russians and Belarusians are essentially being held hostage. We also know of cases of racism and discrimination, of beatings and pushbacks across the border of foreign citizens by Polish border guards. On the 26th of February, Polish border guards beat up and turned back into Ukraine a group of around a hundred Indian students, who then were kindly placed in a refugee camp in Romania. We also, we in Minsk, in Belarus, are receiving a lot of information both from citizens of Belarus and also from embassies of those countries, your countries, whose citizens wished to go to Belarus in order to go home. On our side, the border is open. We are ready to receive both Belarusians and also to consider requests for entry for citizens of third countries. We call on the Ukrainian side to heed our calls and open a humanitarian corridor, or even one humanitarian corridor, to leave Belarus across the Belarus-Ukrainian border. We've already had official contact, we made this request, a real request to representatives of the UN and International Committee of the Red Cross in Minsk. Of great concern also is the rampant abuse and plundering, including against foreigners in Ukraine. The uncontrolled distribution of weapons has already led to a sharp spike in violence and robberies. Normal people are victims of this. For example, long-distance drivers who are simply carrying out international goods delivery. Some of them have already died. So why are you all staying silent about this? Indeed, as much as we know, at the level of the leadership of the African Union, a statement on this has already been made. Belarus lost a third of its population in the Second World War. We know full well the price of human lives. We mourn all of those who've died over the last eight years in the Donetsk and Lugansk People's Republics and in Kiev. We mourn those people who were burned alive in Odessa. We mourn all of those who are dying today. Only negotiations can put an end to this bloodshed. Belarus has already done a lot and will continue to do everything it can to find a resolution to the conflict. In any war, each side has its own truth. Every war has its own dynamics, and as it drags on, becomes crueler, which we are seeing indeed today. We are all drowning in a sea, in a flood of lies and disinformation which is being spread by information terrorists. I can't call them anything else. The vast majority of these, at the same time, are sitting comfortably in armchairs, in offices, thousands of kilometers from the military clashes. In a few minutes, we will all move to a vote on this draft resolution. However, this draft should only contain one paragraph, not written in UNEs but in normal human language. It should contain a call for an immediate cessation of hostilities and for negotiations to take place. I do understand that each and every one of you have your instructions from your capitals. I also know that some of you have been pressured to vote for this draft. I don't have any illusions as regards what the outcome of our vote will be. But nevertheless, I do ask you to think once again and vote according to your conscience, although I understand that one can lose one's job at the UN for voting with one's conscience. Thank you for your attention.
I thank the distinguished representative of Belarus. And now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of the United States.
Mr. President, Mr. Secretary-General, my fellow delegates, to all those who dedicate themselves to the noble mission of this institution. Today, we call on Russia to stop its unprovoked, unjustified, unconscionable war. We call on Russia to respect the sovereignty and territorial integrity of Ukraine. We call on another neighbor of Ukraine, Belarus, who you've just heard from, to stop supporting the war and stop allowing its territory to be used to facilitate this aggression. And today, we stand together in holding Russia accountable for its violations of international law and to address the horrific human rights and humanitarian crisis unfolding before our eyes. This is an extraordinary moment. For the first time in forty years, the Security Council has convened an emergency special session of the General Assembly. Forty years. Most of the men and women fighting in Ukraine were not even born the last time the United Nations came together in this way to unite for peace. And I would venture that many of the people in this room were not born when that happened. But a few of the eldest Ukrainians and Russians might recall a moment like this, a moment when one aggressive European nation invaded another without provocation to claim the territory of its neighbor. A moment when a European dictator declared he would return his empire to its former glory. An invasion that caused a war so horrific that it spurred this organization into existence. Now, at more than any other point in recent history, the United Nations is being challenged. If the United Nations has any purpose, it is to prevent war. It is to condemn war, to stop war. That is our job here today. It is the job you were sent here to do, not just by your capitals, but by all of humanity. A lot has happened very quickly to bring us to this unique moment. It was barely a week ago when, in the dead of night, President Putin launched a full-scale invasion of our fellow UN member state. At the very moment, at the very moment the Security Council was holding an urgent meeting attempting to foster diplomacy and de-escalation. As the Security Council discussed peace, Putin declared war. Ukraine has defended itself with great courage and vigor. As President Biden said in his State of the Union address last night, President Putin, and I quote, "met a wall of strength he never imagined." He met the Ukrainian people. But the brazen and indiscriminate nature of Russia's attack has had devastating, horrific consequences for the entire country. Russia has bombed residential apartment buildings. It has bombed sacred burial grounds. It has shelled kindergartens and orphanages and hospitals. Russia has spurred mass hunger and caused so many to flee their homes. The latest UN estimate are marching toward a million people. We thank the countries who have opened their borders, who have opened their hearts, opened their homes to those fleeing Ukraine. And I want to echo the UN Refugee Agency's call to help and welcome all those fleeing conflict without regard to race or nationality. Refugees are refugees. For those who remain, Russia is destroying critical infrastructure, vital services which provide millions of people across Ukraine with drinking water to stay alive, gas to keep people from freezing to death. And now it appears Russia is preparing to increase the brutality of its campaign against Ukraine. We've seen videos of Russian forces moving exceptionally lethal weaponry into Ukraine, which has no place on the battlefield. That includes cluster munitions and vacuum bombs, which are banned under the Geneva Convention. We all have seen the forty-mile-long lethal convoy charging toward Kiev. President Putin continues to escalate, putting Russia's nuclear forces on high alert, threatening to invade Finland and Sweden. At every step of the war, Russia has betrayed the United Nations. Russia's actions go against everything this body stands for. People across the world have already united together in exactly the way this General Assembly must do today. Protests and vigils against Russia's war and in solidarity with Ukraine, marked with blue and yellow, have sprung up across the globe. These are protests for peace. From Bangkok to Budapest, from Berlin to Buenos Aires, from Sydney to Seoul, from Calgary to Cape Town, and even in Moscow and Minsk, people everywhere are standing up to call for President Putin to stop this attack. The Russian people are themselves asking how many lives Putin will sacrifice for his cynical ambition. asking how many lives Putin will sacrifice for his cynical ambitions. And they are appalled at the answer. To the Russian protesters, I say, "Thank you. Thank you for your bravery." To the Russian soldiers sent to the front lines of an unjust, unnecessary war, I say, "Your leaders are lying to you. Do not commit war crimes. Do everything you can to put down your weapons and leave Ukraine." The truth is that this war was one man's choice and one man alone, President Putin. It was his choice to force hundreds of thousands of people to stuff their lives into backpacks and flee the country. To send newborn babies into makeshift bomb shelters. To make children with cancer huddle in hospital basements, interrupting their treatment, is essentially sentencing them to death. Those were President Putin's choices. Now it's time for us to make ours. The United States is choosing to stand with the Ukrainian people. We are choosing, in coordination with our allies and partners, to impose severe consequences on Russia. We are choosing to hold Russia accountable for its actions, and we will soon turn to vote on a resolution that does just that. We believe this is a simple vote. Vote yes if you believe UN member states, including your own, have a right to sovereignty and territorial integrity. Vote yes if you believe Russia should be held to account for its actions. Vote yes if you believe in upholding the UN Charter and everything this institution stands for. Thank you very much.
I thank the distinguished representative of the United States. And now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of the observer of the Observer State of the Holy See.
Mr. President, Mr. Secretary General, thank for calling this emergency special session, as in recent days, we have been shaken by something tragic: war. The Holy See joins the many member states and millions across the globe who call for the immediate cessation of hostilities in Ukraine and the return to diplomacy and dialogue. Mr. President, the organization is founded to save succeeding generations from the scourge of war and live together in peace with one another as good neighbors. It is the duty of all states to seek to resolve disputes through negotiation, mediation, or by other peaceful means, even when war has commenced. Mr. President, last Sunday, Pope Francis expressed his closeness with all who now suffer as a result of the conflict, stressing that, and I quote, "It is urgent to open humanitarian corridors, and those fleeing must be welcomed." With heartbroken by what is happening in Ukraine, and let us not forget the wars in other parts of the world, I repeat, "Put down your weapons." Those who love peace reject war as an instrument of aggression against the freedom of other peoples and as a means for the settlement of international disputes," end of quote. The Holy See wishes to express, also in this forum, its appreciation to those states which are offering humanitarian assistance to those in need, both in Ukraine and in neighboring countries in which many Ukrainians have sought safety. Mr. President, Pope Francis has called on believers and non-believers alike to observe this Wednesday, 2nd of March, as a day to be close to the suffering of the Ukrainian people, to feel that we are all brothers and sisters, and to implore of God the end of this war. The Holy See is convinced that there is always time for goodwill. There is still room for negotiations. There is still a place for the exercise of wisdom that can prevent the predominance of partisan interests, safeguard the legitimate aspiration of everyone, and spare the world from the folly and horrors of war. May this emergency special session advance efforts that help attain this end. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Holy See. I now give the floor to the observer of the Sovereign Order of Malta.
Mr. President, Mr. Secretary General, distinguished representatives. The Sovereign Order of Malta, a sovereign entity which provides global humanitarian aid with a special mission to serve in the sick and the poor, has observed with great sadness and regret the ongoing conflict which has impacted the lives of so many citizens of Ukraine and which has currently created an unprecedented flow of refugees seeking peace and security across their nation's borders. In eight years of conflict, the Order's embassy to Ukraine has provided considerable support, advice, and material help to Ukrainian citizens and to non-Ukrainian residents of the country who are in need. The current crisis is seeing multiple cities and towns attacked and bombed, forcing families to leave their homes and seeking shelter elsewhere. Our representatives and ambassadors in the region report that while refugees have sufficient means to travel and find refuge on their own or enjoy dual citizenship with nearby nations, the majority do not have the resources to provide for themselves without support. UN agencies predict that a potential refugee exodus of over six million persons might well be the outcome of this situation. In the meanwhile, many elderly people and those who are sick or disabled in some way are unable to escape the bombing and the stress that accompanies civil unrest. Our concern, obviously, is for them as much as it is for those who have managed to leave. Our staff and volunteers in major population centers within Ukraine continue to provide assistance as much as is feasible, given the ongoing security and safety problems. This past weekend, we held a summit of our regional ambassadors and aid providers under the auspices of our international relief agencies, Malteser International. At that time, we were able to review both the growing extent of the refugee crisis as well as the initiatives we are talking to support the growing swell of primarily mothers and children and a small number of senior citizens. As of this morning, it is estimated that almost seven hundred thousand individuals have made the journey across the borders of Poland, Slovakia, Romania, Hungary, and Moldavia. And each day that the conflict continues, the flow of anguished families will grow. We have seen some nations go out of their way to welcome these individuals and to help them through the trauma. Our Order of Malta staff along the border with Ukraine totals over five thousand personnel, with tens of thousands of volunteers doing everything from serving hot food and drink, caring for the victims of injury and accident, providing counseling and emotional support, and assisting in securing of short-term accommodation. Volunteers from locations away from the border, many of them from other countries representing churches and community groups, have driven their cars and vans to provide transportation to new arrivals to ensure that they are given every opportunity to find a place to stay. We are coordinating our activities with international aid agencies, such as the Red Cross and the UNHCR, and are engaged in an international fundraising program to ensure that adequate resources continue to be available for the support and maintenance of those in need. We are encouraged that the UN Human Rights Council in Geneva will be holding a debate on human rights in Ukraine today. Representatives from our government will be participating in this important discussion. We appeal to nations of goodwill to appreciate the trauma experienced by all refugees. In particular, we appeal to countries who are receiving refugees to extend the same welcome they're offering Ukrainians to those of other national and ethnic groups who have been caught in this conflict and who are seeking security. The offer of help and support must cross ethnic, racial, and cultural lines and not be tainted by discriminatory acts or attitudes. This conflict in Europe drives home the realization that the issues of internally displaced persons and the needs of refugees forced from their homes affects the whole world: Africa, the Middle East, Asia, Latin America, and now Europe. Thank you for your attention.
I thank the observer of the Sovereign Order of Malta for the statement. I now give the floor to the observer of the International Institute for Democracy and Electoral Assistance.
Mr. President, Mr. Secretary General, excellencies. International Idea strongly condemns the unprovoked war of aggression waged by the Russian Federation with the involvement of Belarus against Ukraine, a sovereign nation and a democracy. This is in breach of international law and international agreements and a rules-based international order that underpins the shared objective of global peace and the existence of organizations such as International Idea. The invasion order by the president of the Russian Federation, Vladimir Putin, is a blatant violation of the UN Charter. As firm believers in the rights of people to exercise their fundamental rights and freedoms, we convey our full support to and solidarity with the people of Ukraine. They are innocent victims of this aggression. We salute the brave partners and democracy activists with whom International Idea has engaged in recent years when Ukraine made huge progress towards being a stable and thriving democracy. We call on the international community to spring into action to protect them and mitigate the humanitarian consequences of the invasion. We cannot fail to note that a military operation was launched while the UN Security Council was meeting to discuss the crisis. We reiterate our firm belief that international crisis should be addressed through the means of multilateral diplomacy and resolved on the basis of the principles of the Charter. It is particularly unfortunate that this naked rejection of these principles happens during a pandemic that has rendered evident the need for increased global cooperation to make the world governable and to achieve justice for all. In these days, we are witnessing what an unchecked ruler, for decades, trampling fundamental rights and freedoms of his own citizens, can do to undermine peace and democracy beyond his own borders. Ukraine is a country that has successfully reached democratic standards over the past two decades: from respecting media freedoms to free and fair elections, local democracy, and the fight against corruption. It is no wonder President Putin is scared of such democratic vibrancy at his doorstep. This is a pivotal moment for democrats all over the world to stand united in support of Ukraine. It is also the moment to reinforce action to counter and to prevent the rise of authoritarian regimes elsewhere, which cannot survive without kleptocracy and the systematic violation of human rights and freedoms. We call on Russia to immediately withdraw its military forces and fully respect Ukraine's sovereignty. Revanches interpretations of history and attempts to change borders based on ethno-nationalist fantasies offer not a luminous path for humanity, but a route towards darkness and endless cycles of violence. They certainly don't provide any hope to the younger and unborn generations that will bear the brunt of the climate crisis or to the billions of vulnerable people around the world that are yet to realize the promise of a life free from fear and want and the promise of the Agenda 2030. Those are the real challenges of our age. We encourage the UN Secretary General, Antonio Guterres, to make use of his good offices to advance ceasefire talks, humanitarian access to the war-affected areas, and protection of civilians, and particularly the most vulnerable ones. We urge UN member states to adopt and enforce sanctions against the Russian Federation until withdrawal of their forces from Ukraine and the full restoration of its territorial integrity. We urge UN member states to do whatever it takes in compliance with the principles of the UN Charter to stop this war and prevent any further escalation of conflict. International Idea will do its part in collaboration with the United Nations, our member states, and other democratic governments and organizations to protect in Ukraine and elsewhere the principle that every country has a right to freely determine its own fate on the basis of the will of the people, freely expressed. Democracies, institutions, and processes are the best means to protect their right. Today, we must stand up for these principles. Today, we must stand up for Ukraine, which embodies these principles and defends them to our greatest respect. Diaku, you. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished observer of the International Institute for Democracy and Electoral Assistance. We have heard the last speaker in the debate on this item. The General Assembly has thus concluded this stage of the consideration of Agenda Item 5. The Assembly will resume its consideration of Agenda Item 5, entitled "Later Date: 28th February 2014 From the Perman Representative of Ukraine to the United Nations Edges to the President of the Security Council S/2014/136 To Take Action on a Draft Resolution Issued as Document A/ES-11/L1." I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Ukraine to introduce Draft Resolution A/ES-11/L1.
Mr. President, Secretary General, distinguished delegates. We are living through a defining moment for our generation. Our generation is the generation that was supposed... Our generation is the generation that was supposed by our predecessors to be saved from scourge of war. That is why our predecessors created the United Nations. And yet today, it falls to us to save future generations. Let me read the following text. Our position is that whatever grievances a nation may have, however objectionable it finds the status quo, aggressive warfare is an illegal means for ending those grievances or for altering those conditions. It may be that the nation faced desperate problems, problems that would have warranted the boldest measures short of war. All other methods—persuasion, propaganda, economic competition, diplomacy—were open to an aggrieved country. But aggressive warfare was outlawed. The defendants did make aggressive war a war in violation of treaties. They did attack and invade their neighbors in order to effectuate a foreign policy which they knew could not be accomplished by measures short of war. And that is as far as we accuse or propose to inquire," end of quote, said in his opening statement to the International Military Tribunal on November 21, 1945, in the Palace of Justice at Nuremberg, Justice Robert Jackson, Chief of Counsel. And these words are addressed today to Mr. Putin, Mr. Shoigu, Mr. Lavrov, Mr. Volodin, Ms. Matvienko and perhaps dozens more, but certainly they are not addressed to the Russian citizens, those Russian citizens who try to preserve their dignity. For almost a week, Ukraine is fighting, fighting under the bombs and missiles, fighting in the face of armadas of hardware and countless crowds of enemies. They have come to the Ukrainian soil not only to kill some of us, not only to shift our course and priorities. They have come to deprive Ukraine of the very right to exist. They have come to resolve the Ukrainian issue, as their propagandists claimed. Just stop and think whether these words remind you of something. Yes, more than eighty years ago, another dictator tried to finally resolve the issue of another people. He failed. When the world responded in a resolute and united manner—it was happened immediately and the delay costed dozens of millions of people. Are we ready to pay such a price now? Or is it time to demonstrate the unity of purpose and deeds already now? We appreciate all manifestations of such unity and solidarity with Ukraine. I would like to express gratitude to all member states that support Ukrainians in their battle for freedom. I would also like to thank those member states that accepted Ukrainian refugees, mostly women and children. More than half a million have already fled from Russian missiles and shells. I will not recite all facts of new war crimes and crimes against humanity that the Russian troops have committed since my previous statement two days ago. The list is so long that it will run out of time. The crimes are so barbaric that it is difficult to comprehend. Facing the total resistance of the Ukrainian population, Putin's regime has proceeded to widespread use of indiscriminate weapons such as multiple rocket launchers and aerial bombs against the residential areas. Ukrainians are being killed by Russian ballistic missiles and thermobaric weapons. Just yesterday, Kiev, Kharkiv, Zhtomir, Mariupol, Melitopol and many other cities and towns sustained heavy shelling that killed dozens of innocents, including children. Ukraine deeply regrets that a student from India has become a victim of this shelling by the Russian Armed Forces in Kharkiv. We offer our deepest sympathies to India and the relatives of the victim. A Chinese citizen was also injured in another Ukrainian city because of Russia's deadly attacks. The Ukrainian and foreign citizens have become hostages of the Russian armed aggression against Ukraine. In Kiev, Russian murderers hit the city TV tower, killing five passebys. One of the missiles dropped on the Babinyar Holocaust Memorial, a sacred place of commemoration of Jews, Ukrainians, Roma and representatives of other ethnic groups killed by Nazis during the World War II. What an irony, when victims of Nazis are being killed for the second time by Nazi modern followers. As the President of Ukraine asked, "What was the point of repeating the slogan 'Never again' in eighty years?" It's already clear that the goal of Russia is not an occupation only; it is genocide. On 7th and 8th of March 2022, the International Court of Justice will hold public hearings in the case concerning allegations of genocide under the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of the Crime of Genocide—Ukraine versus Russian Federation. Also, the prosecutor of the International Criminal Court has decided to proceed with opening of a formal investigation into the situation in Ukraine. Unprovoked escalation of Russian aggression against Ukraine gives reasons to believe that crimes within the jurisdiction of the ICC continue to be committed on the territory of Ukraine, along with the situation in Crimea and Donbass. Recent events suggest that aggressors' troops continue to commit war crimes and crimes against humanity. Dear colleagues, one might consider, observing the bloodshed in Ukraine, that it is not my war. It is a mistake. The evil will never stop; it requires more and more space to conquer. If tolerated, it advances further and further. The draft resolution is one of the building blocks to build a wall to stop it, to stop in Ukraine and not to let it go further. The wall that will protect all of you, in particular younger generations. Distinguished delegates, by voting today, you also reconfirm your country's commitment to the UN Charter. After the vote, I invite you ambassadors and representatives to stop by the Indonesian Lounge and to sign this little blue book. Little but of global magnitude, every vote in favor of the resolution and every signature of country that voted in favor would be a historical reconfirmation of the Charter. It is very easy, ladies and gentlemen, to sign the Charter at a time of peace. It is the duty to sign and reconfirm and implement the Charter at the time of war. So stop by the Indonesian Lounge, put the name of your country if you voted in favor. And after you sign this book, I will hand it over to the Secretary-General for keeping the book in his office, in front of him. So at every single moment, the Secretary-General will get an inspiration from the overwhelming majority of nations who still trust in the UN, who still trust in the UN Charter. There is a very fragile gentleman, a very old one. He was born in a territory that was part of the Kingdom of Hungary. He will celebrate his 122—122-years birthday in nine days. His name is Benjamin Ferenc. Benjamin Ferenc was an investigator of war crimes, a chief prosecutor at one of the twelve subsequent trials of Nuremberg. Later, he became an advocate of international rule of law and for the establishment of the International Criminal Court. With the permission of the producer, I would play a couple of seconds of his votes, and I want you to listen very carefully.
It's three words: law, not war. If you can do that, you save every day billions of dollars, which you can use to deal with the legitimate complaints of all people who need medical care, students who have to pay for their tuition, all the legitimate complaints which could be solved if we didn't spend the money on weapons to kill them instead of helping them. And that is the current system. Now, how are you going to do it? I will end by telling you how to do it and the principles which have guided me. There are three principles: one, never give up; two, never give up; three, I hear you, never give up. Good luck. I wish you the best of luck.
Show respect to the Charter. Show respect to the Secretary-General. Show respect to this gentleman who will celebrate 102 years since his birthday. I call upon all responsible member states to support the draft. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Ukraine. We shall now proceed to consider Draft Resolution A/ES-11/L1 entitled "Aggression Against Ukraine." Before I open the floor for explanations of vote before the vote, may I remind delegations that explanations of vote are limited to ten minutes and should be made by delegations from their seats. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Russian Federation.
Russia would ask for this draft resolution to be put to the vote, and we call on you not to support this draft. However, we know about the unprecedented pressure that our Western partners are exerting on a large number of countries, urging them to vote as they see fit. This is not something even that we can call pressure. It was open and cynical threats, and we know about it. This document will not allow us to end military activities. On the contrary, it could embolden and Kiev radicals and nationalists to continue to determine the policy of their country at any price, holding peaceful civilians hostage, but not in the figurative sense of the term, but in the literal sense of it. Now, that is what is happening in a series of cities in Ukraine where people are being used as human shields. Today, we've learned that the Ukrainian military are not giving citizens of—allowing citizens of Mariupol to leave the city. They are—they are keeping them there, including women and children there in one of the schools in Mariupol, and forcing them, turning back all civilians who are trying to leave the city along humanitarian corridors. We also know about planned nationalist battalions who are planning provocations, which they have been preparing with the participation of civilians so that then they can accuse Russia of having carried them out, running against norms of international humanitarian law. And military hardware is being placed in residential areas as well as rocket launchers and artillery. Today, we will provide examples of this to the UN leadership, who are still asserting that they don't have this kind of evidence, although videos taken by Ukrainian citizens are freely available on the internet. Responsibility for this fully lies with the Ukrainian authorities, much like for the irresponsible and criminal distribution of weapons to anyone who wants one, including those who have been released from prison. This has already led to many cases of robbery, murder and plundering. Colleagues, your refusal to support today's draft resolution as a vote for a peaceful Ukraine, free from radicalism and neo-Nazism, living in peace with its neighbors and refusing to be managed from outside. It is—the this was the aim of our special military operation, who the sponsors of this resolution tried to present as aggression. We heard from the Ukrainian representative words about Nazism, but he didn't mention the rampant neo-Nazism in Ukraine itself and the rampant neo-Nazis and neo-nationalist radical organizations about torchlit processions and those who support Hitler. Those who are interested in the development of the Ukrainian crisis and how it has developed very much understand where it came from. Actions today, we are seeing—in actions today, we're trying to stop the eight-year war of the Maidan regime on the people of Donbass. Over the last years, our countries have done everything it can, and things are impossible to avoid this kind of scenario. We, according to the Secretary-General, have left no stone unturned and knocked on every door, however we were not listened to. Those living in Donbass are still being bombed. They don't plan on stopping at fourteen thousand victims, the vast majority of which are living in the LPR and DPR, were living in the LPR and DPR. The aim of our special operation is announced on the basis of Article 51 of the UN Charter and will be achieved. However, we are not carrying out strikes on civilian facilities and civilians. Don't believe the large number of fakes spread around the Internet on this. These fakes have only distributed like biscuits at operation centers, special operations of Ukraine, and this center was destroyed. A peaceful scenario for Ukraine could happen if the radicals concern about preserving civilian lives in their country rather than hiding behind them. This is a call in the text before the vote... There is no reference to this call in the text before us to vote on. Nothing is mentioned about the illegal coup in Kiev in February 2014 with the connivance of Germany, France, and Poland and with the support of the United States, where the legitimately elected president of the country was overthrown. This draft does not mention anything along the lines that the new nationalist authorities are limiting the rights of citizens to use the Russian language. This was a stark green light for a large chain of events of violations of the basic rights of those living in the east of the country, not only in the east of the country, including the most valuable right, that right to life. Many of you don't want to hear about this, about the tragedies happening in Ukraine after the Maidan coup in 2014 and those people who burnt alive in Odessa and the crimes of those who didn't agree... against those who didn't agree with them. And the most blatant example of this was the war against Donbass rolled out by Kiev. There's nothing in the document either that over the last eight years, Europe and the US have been pumping Ukraine with weapons so that those people can kill civilians in Donbass. And the loyal authorities in Kiev are fully ignoring the Minsk agreements and sabotaging Security Council Resolution 2202. Finally, this draft is a clear attempt of those who over the last decades have committed huge numbers of aggressions, illegal and international law, as well as coups, one of which indeed was the Maidan coup in Ukraine. They present themselves as champions of international law. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Russian Federation. And now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Serbia.
I most sincerely regret the events taking place in the east of Europe. Russia and Ukraine have always been friendly country to the Republic of Serbia, and Serbian people perceive Russians and Ukrainians as fraternal nations. We felt loss of life for which men in Ukraine is true tragedy. The Republic of Serbia is committed to observing principles of territorial integrity and political independence of states as one of the basic principles of international law based on UN Charter and Final Act from Helsinki from 1975, which guarantees the right of states to inviability of borders. Just like it is committed to preservation of sovereignty and integrity of its own territory, the Republic of Serbia likewise advocating respect for territorial integrity of other sovereign nations. And regardless of not agreeing with all formulation stating resolution, will vote in favor of resolution. I am obliged to point to PP 14 and remind to the first attack against a sovereign state on the soil of Europe after Second World War took place not so long ago in 1999, when 19 countries attacked, at that time, Federal Republic of Yugoslavia, primarily Republic of Serbia, when there was no appropriate reaction of such distinguished institution to this flagrant violation of UN Charter. Despite the fact they still suffer from consequence of severe violation of fundamental principles of international law by others, Serbia is not giving up these principles even today. The Republic of Serbia will continue to advocate termination conflicts, expecting that the parties will invest additional efforts into reaching diplomatic solution and creating condition for peace throughout dialogue. Serbia will provide all kinds humanitarian aid to endangered Ukrainian citizen who are remaining committed to peace and consistent respect for international law. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Serbia. And now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Syrian Arab Republic.
Shukran Said Rais. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, the draft resolution before us today clearly represents a prejudiced attitude based on political propaganda. It's a means of political pressure. Those who prepared the draft resolution incorporated an aggressive language against the Soviet... the Russian Federation to belittle its legitimate stand based on its security concerns and its right to protect its people from the threats to national Russian security. Belarus is also impacted by this draft resolution. This draft resolution represents a flagrant political hypocrisy. Had the US and its Western allies been serious in deescalating the situation, they would have fulfilled the promises they undertook three decades ago, not to expand EU and transform Ukraine to into a continuous threat to the Russian Federation. And they should have pressured Ukraine to abide by Minsk and to stop the violations against the civilians in Donbass, let alone those countries' eagerness to supply Ukraine with heavy weaponry and missiles, encouraging volunteers to fight in Ukraine. This indicates the clear-cut desire of those countries for provocations and not for containment and de-escalation. This draft resolution coincides with huge media campaign to spread erroneous information and lies. It's not designed to find a clear-cut and real solution for the crisis, rather to defame the Russian Federation. It is a text that is full of loopholes and untruths. It ignores the real reasons for the escalation of tension and for the eruption of hostilities. Those who are eager to defend the Charter of the United Nations now, today, they should have shown the same eagerness vis-à-vis Israel's continued occupation of the Arab territories and the aggression committed by the Turkish forces against our territory. What about the US violations of the territorial integrity of our land, Serious rejection of Western hegemonistic policies and interference in the internal affairs of states, prolongating crises, promulgating and spreading anarchy, opting for double standards and selectivities, imposing unilateral sanctions, make it necessary for us to reject this draft resolution and vote against it. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Syrian Arab Republic. And now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Saint Vincent and the Grenadines.
Mr. President, it is clear from the debate over the past two days that the membership of the United Nations is united in its call to end the war in Ukraine and return to diplomacy. Saint Vincent and the Grenadines wishes to offer an explanation of its vote on the draft resolution before us today. Mr. President, Saint Vincent and the Grenadines will vote in favor of the draft resolution. We will vote in accordance with our steadfast commitment to upholding the purposes and principles of the United Nations Charter, which formed the core of multilateralism and gave birth to our United Nations 76 years ago. It bears repeating, Mr. President, that these principles underscore respect for sovereignty, political independence, and territorial integrity of states and enjoin member states to refrain from the threat or the use of force in the conduct of their international relations. Our support for the draft resolution is rooted in our conviction that the strict adherence to international law, including international humanitarian and human rights law and the principles of peace, dialogue, and compromise for the preservation of humanity is not optional. As a small island developing state, full compliance with the bedrock principles of international law remains an existential issue. We take the floor again, Mr. President, to repeat our call for these principles to be applied consistently and upheld as universal truths instead of selective, uneven, and unpredictable tools to further great power ambition anywhere and by anyone. Historically and in recent times, we have witnessed the naked hypocrisy, double standards, and cynical misapplication of international law, which we have condemned. Today, we strongly emphasize that our august assembly should apply the fundamental principles of our Charter impartially, irrespective of the size, economic, and military power of the principles involved. Mr. President, in the midst of prevailing global challenges, such as the climate crisis and the COVID-19 pandemic, we simply cannot afford another conflict. War does not manage grievances. Saint Vincent and the Grenadines therefore calls for an immediate ceasefire to avert further bloodshed, human suffering, and a global catastrophe, and to engage in peaceful dialogue to find a solution to this war post-haste. Today, we must unite for peace. Thank you, and peace profound to all.
I thank the distinguished representative of Saint Vincent and the Grenadines. We have heard the last speaker in explanations of vote before the vote. Before proceeding to take a decision on Draft Resolution A/ES-11/L1, I wish to address the question concerning the majority required for the adoption of the draft resolution. In light of Article 18, Paragraph 2 and 3 of the Charter of the United Nations, is there any objection to taking action on Draft Resolution by a two-thirds majority of the members present and voting? I see no objection. The two-thirds majority of members present and voting is therefore required for the adoption of Draft Resolution The Assembly will now take a decision on Draft Resolution A/ES-11/L1 entitled "Aggression Against Ukraine". For your information, the draft resolution has closed for e-sponsorship. I now give the floor to the representative of the Secretariat.
Mr. President, I should like to announce that since the submission of the draft resolution and in addition to delegations listed on the L document, the following countries have also become the cosponsors of A/ES-11/L1, Barbados, and Cambodia. If any other country wish to cosponsor A/ES-11/L1, please signify by pressing the microphone button now. There is nothing further, Mr. President?
I thank the representative of the Secretariat. A recorded vote has been requested. We shall now begin the voting process. Those in favor of Draft Resolution A/ES-11/L1, please signify. Those against, abstentions.
The General Assembly is now voting on Draft Resolution entitled "Aggression Against Ukraine". Will all delegations confirm that their votes are accurately reflected on the screen? The voting has been completed. Please lock the machine.
The result of the vote is as follows. The result of the vote is as follows: in favor, 41; against, 5; abstentions, 35. Draft Resolution A/ES-11/L1 is adopted. Before giving the floor for explanations of vote after the vote, may I remind delegations that explanations of vote are limited to 10 minutes and should be made by delegations from their seats. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Tunisia.
Shukran Said Rais.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, Tunisia voted in favor of the draft resolution in support of the principles and values of the UN Charter on which our foreign policy is based. We would like to emphasize that the crisis must be settled by peaceful means, which is the ideal solution to prevent further aggravation of the situation and further human tragedy. The world witnessed so many grueling wars, destructive to peace and security and the life of people. Our experience indicate that military options cannot solve any crisis. Dialogue and negotiations can settle all differences and finding compromises. The current crisis in Ukraine comes at a time the world was getting out of COVID-19 and prepare itself for a new stage based on solidarity, cooperation, and effective engagement in multilateral action and achieving our common agenda. We believe that the world cannot undertake or cannot burden itself by further crises. We encourage the engagement of the parties in peaceful negotiations, and we urge the international community to intensify efforts to obligate these parties to resort to negotiations in a manner to seize hostilities and to prepare the way for finding permanent solution. Given the fact that international peace and security are a whole, Tunisia calls for dealing with all just questions in one standard so that peoples can regain their legitimate rights in accordance with international legitimacy to build a more stable, more peaceful world. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Tunisia, and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Rwanda.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President, for giving the floor. Mr. President, Rwanda takes the floor to explain its position on the vote we just cast. Rwanda voted in favor of this resolution to firmly support that sovereignty, independence, and interior integrity of any country must be respected. We supported this resolution to reaffirm our commitment to the Charter of the United Nations. Mr. President, military escalation should cease immediately and go for peaceful settlement of the crisis. The Russian Federation and Ukraine have the key to resolve this conflict. The external intervention will only worsen the situation. Mr. President, we freely support international efforts to de-escalate the war, including the efforts of the Secretary-General in solving the crisis. We argue or concern the parties to demonstrate calm and seek a solution to the conflict through dialogue to ensure that civilians do not continue to pay the heaviest price. A lasting solution, Mr. President, will only be achieved through dialogue by both parties, taking into account the concerns of both sides. The current war does not guarantee that it will bring peace. Instead, it's likely to generate subsequent crises and human suffering. Rwanda also expresses serious concern with the extent of humanitarian devastation and peace and security challenges caused by the conflict. We are also concerned by the reports that Africans are being brushless, segregated, and denied safe exit and admission to neighboring countries. We call on all those who are involved to allow unhindered evacuation without looking at the caro of origin of anyone. Mr. President, the founding principles of the United Nations Charter is to live peacefully with each other, uphold the sovereignty and territorial integrity of states while considering the security interests of other countries. Diplomatic options present the better solution to the sustainable peace. We call for open dialogue and negotiations in good faith. Finally, Mr. President, Rwanda calls for a sincere commitment to the United Nations Charter and international order. The ongoing crisis poses a severe threat to international peace and security. We encourage concerned parties to give a chance to peace. We wish to underline that a long-lasting solution to the current crisis primarily lands and is in the hands of both Ukraine and the Russian Federation. Dialogue is the only option to resolve the current crisis. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Rwanda, and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of China.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, there continues to be dramatic changes of the situation in Ukraine. What is now unfolding is indeed heart-wrenching. China's basic position on the Ukraine issue is consistent and unequivocal. We always believe that all countries' sovereignty and territorial integrity should be respected and that international disputes should be resolved peacefully in accordance with the purposes and principles of the UN Charter. The top priority right now is to ease the situation on the ground as much as possible and prevent the situation from escalating or even getting out of control. Russia and Ukraine have already held their first round of negotiations. Despite their differences, both sides have shown their willingness to continue the negotiations. China welcomes this. Faced with the highly complex and sensitive situation, China once again calls on the international community to stick to the overall direction of a political settlement and foster an enabling atmosphere and conditions for direct dialogue and negotiations between the parties concerned. Mr. President, any action taken by the United Nations and the relevant parties should give priority to regional peaceability and the universal security of all parties and should play a positive role for de-escalation and diplomatic solutions. Regrettably, the draft resolution submitted to this emergency special session for vote has not undergone full consultations with the whole membership, nor does it take into full consideration the history and the complexity of the current crisis. It does not highlight the importance of the principle of indivisible security or the urgency of promoting political settlement and stepping up diplomatic efforts. These are not in line with China's consistent position. Therefore, we had no choice but to abstain in the voting. Mr. President, the final settlement of the Ukraine crisis requires abandoning the Cold War mentality, abandoning the logic of ensuring one's own security at expense of others' security, and abandoning the approach of seeking regional security by expanding military blocks. It is important to give full attention and respect to the legitimate security concerns of all countries and, on that basis, conduct negotiations to put in place a balanced, effective, and sustainable European security mechanism. Blindly exerting pressure and imposing sanctions and creating division and confrontation will only further complicate the situation, result in a rapid spillover of the negative impact of the crisis, and affect even more countries. We call on the international community to take a responsible approach, promote the relevant parties to immediately return to the track of political settlement, and seek a comprehensive solution to the Ukraine issue through dialogue and consultation. China is ready to continue its constructive role in this regard. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of China. I give the floor to the distinguished representative, Sierra Leone.
Mr. President, Secretary-General, excellencies. The delegation of Sierra Leone has requested for the floor to explain its position on the agenda item and vote on the resolution. The government of Sierra Leone is gravely concerned about the regrettable Syria situation created in Ukraine with ramifications for regional and international peace and security. Sierra Leone also expresses serious concern over the growing refugee and humanitarian situation in and around Ukraine, in particular the safety and well-being of Syrian students in Ukraine. In appreciating efforts to provide the necessary safety and refuge, it is important for all those fleeing the conflict to be treated equally and with dignity without discrimination, whether on the basis of race or status. A blanket denial is not the answer, nor representative of the values we seek to protect. Mr. President, Sierra Leone voted in favor of the resolution based on our fundamental belief in the sanctity of the United Nations Charter, its principles, and the purposes of the organization. Our vote today is not a selective application of our fundamental belief in the principles of sovereign equality of all UN member states, the territorial integrity or political independence of member states, non-interference, and the peaceful settlement of dispute. Our vote today is not to absolve the actions and inactions of the United Nations, particularly in addressing peace and security questions in Africa. While we believe that the United Nations must be consistent in the application of its Charter and in pursuit of its purposes, resorting to the threat or use of force and the violation of the territorial integrity of any member state inconsistent with the Charter must be rejected. Sierra Leone accordingly calls for the full respect of the national sovereignty and territorial integrity of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders. We also call for the immediate cessation of hostilities, and in this regard, we welcome the commencement of ceasefire talks, and we urge for the continuation of the talks in a meaningful way. Finally, we also urge for good-faith diplomatic efforts to resolve the conflict. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Sierra Leone, and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Thailand.
Mr. President, Thailand has carefully considered the draft and voted in support of the resolution because of the overriding importance that Thailand attaches to the principles enshrined in the United Nations Charter and those of international law, in particular, respect for sovereignty, territorial integrity, and the non-use of force against states. Our support of the resolution also underlines our deep concerns for the plight of affected civilians and the humanitarian consequences of the hostilities and violence in the area. In this regard, we call on all parties to fully comply with their obligations under international humanitarian law. We are also concerned with the potential longer-term consequences on the rules-based international order and renew our call towards peace and for all parties to enhance dialogue through various means to truly realize a peaceful settlement of the situation. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Thailand, and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Brazil.
Mr. President, we recognize the exceptional circumstances we are all facing, and we share the conviction that the General Assembly could not remain silent. The resolution adopted this morning conveys a message, and Brazil has added its voice to that of other members. The adoption of this resolution by the General Assembly shows the unwavering commitment of the international community to upholding the core principles upon which the UN is built. We are appreciative of the attention given in different paragraphs of the text to the critical need to monitor and alleviate the humanitarian situation on the ground. We also welcome the text for urging the parties to the conflict to fully respect international humanitarian law, to guarantee the safety of civilians as well as of humanitarian and medical personnel, and to facilitate unhindered access of humanitarian assistance to those in need. The resolution as adopted, however, does not go far enough in underscoring that the cessation of hostilities is only a first step to achieve peace. Sustainable peace needs additional steps. In this respect, it is regrettable that the supportive role that the United Nations can and should play has been left by the wayside in the eagerness to point fingers. Yes, the resolution is a call for peace by the international community, but peace requires more than the silence of guns and the withdrawal of troops. The path to peace requires comprehensive work on the security concerns of the parties. The only precondition should be an immediate ceasefire. Mr. President, the resolution cannot be seen as permissive towards the indiscriminate application of sanctions and the deployment of arms. These initiatives are not conducive to the proper resumption of a constructive diplomatic dialogue and risk further escalating tensions with unpredictable consequences to the region and beyond. We also have concerns about preamble paragraph fifteen. It is not constructive, at this moment fraught with danger, in this particular resolution, to comment on military measures adopted by any specific nuclear power, be it the Russian Federation or the members of NATO. Once effective negotiations do get started, all the parties must show true flexibility and spirit of compromise. Lasting solutions can only be achieved at the negotiating table through committed dialogue. Brazil continues to urge all actors to de-escalate and to renew efforts in favor of a negotiated diplomatic agreement between Ukraine and Russia that contributes to the establishment of the security and the stability of the region. We stand ready to resolutely work in favor of peace in the discussions in this assembly, in the Security Council, and in other fora. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Brazil. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of the United Arab Emirates.
Thank you, Mr. President. This emergency special session comes as the conflict in Ukraine has reached a dangerous inflection point. The international community is alarmed by developments on the ground, and this is the clear message of today's resounding vote. The humanitarian situation is worsening by the day. We have seen reports of rapidly growing civilian casualties and massive displacement, the extent of which Europe has not experienced in decades. The UAE is deeply concerned by these developments. Our collective responsibility must, however, be towards exhausting all efforts and using all diplomatic channels to prevent a further deterioration of the humanitarian situation. We remain firm in that belief more than ever before. Yesterday, the UAE pledged five million US dollars in response to the UN's humanitarian flash appeal. We know that in the days, weeks, and months ahead, more must be done. The credibility of this organization, born out of the ashes of World War II, rests on its universal representation and its effectiveness in applying the principles that we all uphold. However, as this conflict has revealed, the clear and full voice of the United Nations has only grown harder to summon because it is not equally applied. Despite deepening divisions, now is time to take a step back, identify diplomatic off-ramps, and engage constructively to end this conflict. It is also a time to summon our reserves of wisdom and experience to guide the way forward. Global solidarity means doing more than focusing on conflicts in some parts of the world while ignoring others. We need to shift our mindset from conflict management to conflict resolution. Our collective security depends on it. Let this crisis be the wake-up call. The future of this organization may rest on that. We all need to galvanize UN efforts to promote the dialogue, work towards an end to the hostilities, and address the humanitarian situation for those most desperately in need. The UAE recognizes the need to meet this moment. to meet this moment with renewed diplomacy and leadership and put the needs of the people on the ground at the center of our efforts. The avenues for dialogue must, however, remain open more urgently than ever before, and we must pursue them together. Mr. President, right now, we recognize that this resolution adopted here today is a necessary signal of where we need to be going. Resigning ourselves to a cycle of perpetual violence and sanctions that only adds to the suffering of civilians diminishes us all. We voted for this resolution and we join with member states in making this appeal to peace, a just peace that endures by recognizing the legitimate concerns of all parties and also abides by the UN's charters of principles and independence and sovereignty and territorial integrity. This resolution, however, as others have said, is not enough for a sustainable peace. Resolution of this conflict requires dialogue and effective diplomacy. This text represents the determination of member states to respond to the conflict today in Ukraine. That is the call that rings clearly from this meeting. We must now turn to finding ways to bring about its peaceful resolution with full respect for and commitment to real and engaged diplomacy. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of the United Arab Emirates. And now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of India.
Thank you, Mr. President. India has been deeply concerned over the rapidly deteriorating situation in Ukraine and the ensuing humanitarian crisis. An Indian national was tragically killed in Kharkiv yesterday due to the ongoing hostilities. We express our deepest condolences to his family and to that of each and every innocent civilian who has lost his or her life in this conflict. We demand safe and uninterrupted passage for all Indian nationals, including our students who are still stranded in Ukraine, particularly from Kharkiv and other cities in the conflict zones. Many member states share this concern. We have reiterated this demand to both the Russian Federation and Ukraine. This remains our foremost priority. Ensuring the well-being and safety of our citizen is the basic duty of every government. We have therefore instituted special flights to bring back Indians home from conflict zones. My government has deployed senior ministers as special envoys to countries neighboring Ukraine to facilitate evacuation. We thank all neighboring countries of Ukraine for opening their borders and extending all facilities to our embassies at this time. India has already dispatched humanitarian assistance to Ukraine. This includes medicines, medical equipment, and other relief material. We are sending more such tranches in the coming days. India supports the international community's call for an immediate ceasefire. We also support safe humanitarian access to conflict zones. We remain firm in our conviction that differences can only be resolved through dialogue and diplomacy. Prime Minister Modi has unequivocally conveyed this in his discussions with world leaders, including of the Russian Federation and Ukraine. He underscored the urgent imperative for humanitarian access and movement of stranded civilians. We therefore sincerely hope that the second round of talks between the Russian Federation and Ukraine will lead to a positive outcome. India urges that all member states demonstrate their commitment to the principles of the UN Charter, to international law, and respect of sovereignty and territorial integrity of all states, keeping in view the totality of the evolving situation. India decided to abstain. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of India. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Bahrain.
Thank you, President. We voted in favor of the draft resolution based on our strong conviction of the importance of the principles of the UN Charter, particularly the principles of good neighborliness and peaceful resolution of conflicts, but also the principle for of respect for the independence and territorial integrity of all countries. The Kingdom of Bahrain underscores its support for all efforts that seek to end hostilities and for dialogue to resume and use all diplomatic means necessary to achieve peace. Thank you, President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Bahrain. And now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Eritrea.
Thank you, Mr. President. Eritrea is taking the floor in explanation of vote after the vote on the draft resolution A/ES-11/L1. Eritrea firmly believes that respect for sovereignty, territorial integrity, and political independence as enshrined in the United Nations Charter are sacrosanct principles and should be respected by everyone at all times for the attainment of sustainable world peace. Eritrea's vote is demonstration of its uncompromising stand for peace. Its position is against internationalizing incessant rhetoric and imposition of unilateral sanctions, which regrettably further polarize international relations and escalates the situation with enormous implications for civilians. Instead, we have consistently opted for world regions to be given the needed space and solidarity to address political problems. The situation between Russia and Ukraine raises serious concern with political, economic, and security ramifications for Europe and the rest of the world. It requires immediate resolution by giving more chance to diplomacy. We hope that the ongoing talks between the two parts on the Belarusian border yields a quick and acceptable agreement to stop the war and pave a foundation for peace in the region. Eritrea opposes all forms of unilateral sanctions as illegal and counterproductive. Eritrea, the country that has been subjected to such measures by the West for two decades, including new sets of unilateral measures, understands that sanctions do not resolve problems of peace and security. On the contrary, they only hurt innocent people and undermine the road to peace. It will be remiss if I don't address disturbing reports that African citizens living in Ukraine are facing difficulties across the borders. We call on all countries to facilitate safe passage to people fleeing for safety regardless of their racial identity. Let me conclude, Mr. President, by reiterating that that Eritrea would like to see that the windows for diplomacy remain open. We are confident of the ability of the parties to resolve their differences and reach an outcome that meets the interest and concern of all. We hope that the international community constructively supports the parties in their search for sustainable peace. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Eritrea. And now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Islamic Republic of Iran.
Bismillah, Rahman, Rahim. Mr. President, the Islamic Republic of Iran is following the ongoing conflict between Russia and Ukraine with grave concern. We reiterate our principled position regarding the need for peaceful settlement of disputes in accordance with international law and underline the need for full respect by all parties for the well-established provisions of the United Nations Charter, international law, including international humanitarian law. We emphasize that the sovereignty and territorial integrity of all states must be fully respected and the safety and security of all civilians must be guaranteed. In order to find long-term and sustainable solutions to such crises, it is necessary to address the root causes. We note that the current complexities in the fragile region of Eastern Europe have been exacerbated by the provocative actions and decisions of the US and NATO. The security concerns of Russia must be respected. Wars and destructions inflicted on civilian lives and infrastructures are not acceptable. Wherever they occur, the Islamic Republic of Iran calls for urgent cessation of hostilities and the escalation of tensions in the current conflict. In this regard, Iran underlines the essentiality of dialogue to address issues of concerns to all sides leading to long-term results. The UN must always avoid double standards, particularly when it's considering issues related to the maintenance of international peace and security. It is unfortunate to note that the UN, in particular the Security Council, has at times neglected this principle which has undermined its credibility. A case in point is the Security Council's handling of the conflict in Yemen. Mr. President, we believe that the text of the resolution before the General Assembly lacks impartiality and realistic mechanisms for resolving the crisis through peaceful means. Furthermore, not all member states of the UN were given the opportunity to engage in negotiations on the text of the resolution. It should be emphasized that the General Assembly is not in a position to determine the existence of an act of aggression because in addition to Article thirty-nine of the Charter, GA Resolution thirty-three fourteen of fourteen, December nineteen seventy-four, calls on the Security Council to determine the existence of an act of aggression. Moreover, convening the emergency special session based on the General Assembly Resolution three seven seven A shall not be considered as the end of the dialogue. My government continues to call for a comprehensive, peaceful, and sustained resolution to the current conflict, including an immediate ceasefire and a start of the dialogue as well as provision of humanitarian assistance to the people in need. For the above mentioned reasons, my delegation abstained from voting on the resolution. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Islamic Republic of Iran. And now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Egypt.
Thank you, Mr. President. Egypt would like to reiterate the following points with regards to the draft resolution that has been adopted and for which we have voted positively out of our belief in the principles and values of international law and the goals of the UN Charter. First, finding a swift political settlement to end this crisis through dialogue and peaceful means and through an act of diplomacy should be our common goal and should remain the goal of the whole international community when dealing in the current crisis. And we should also allow room to achieve this main goal through our endeavors. Second, Egypt reiterates that we should not disregard the necessity of dealing with the root causes of the current crisis and dealing with them in order to defuse the crisis and achieve peace and stability. Three, Egypt rejects the exploitation of economic sanctions outside the multilateral international mechanisms because previous experiences have shown that such sanctions can have dire humanitarian consequences and lead to escalating the sufferings of civilians. Four, all parties should live up to their responsibilities and guarantee the flow of humanitarian assistance to all those in need without any form of discrimination. And they should also guarantee the free movement of the residents across the borders because we have had reports of discriminatory treatments in that regard. Five, Egypt warns of the economic and social consequences of the current crisis on the global economy. The global economy is still suffering the consequences of the pandemic and the disruption in the supply chains and the international aviation is the best proof. Six, the effectiveness and credibility of the international multilateral mechanisms in facing the different crises and challenges depends on how we deal with all the international crises based on the same standards and criteria in line with the UN Charter and its objectives without consecrating the status quo and humanitarian sufferings for decades. And thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Egypt. And now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Algeria.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to deliver the explanation of vote of my country, Algeria.
At a time when my country, Algeria, is closely following the development of the situation and the escalation in Ukraine, my delegation would like to emphasize once again that Algeria is committed to the principles and objectives of the United Nations, which should remain the basis of international law and a cornerstone in international relations, especially the respect of the independence, sovereignty, and territorial integrity of the member states according to the international legitimacy and the right of people to self-determination. And in line with our positions, calling for enhancing multilateralism and safeguarding it, and also in line with our commitment to developing amicable relationships among countries based on peaceful coexistence and the peaceful settlement of conflicts and the mutual respect of international commitments and security guarantees, my country, Algeria, can only join all the other efforts and diplomatic calls aiming at de-escalating the current situation and adopting dialogue in order to foster peaceful coexistence among nations to safeguard international peace and security. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Algeria. And now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of United Republic of Tanzania.
Mr. President, the United Republic of Tanzania has decided to abstain this resolution as a matter of principle and in defense of the UN Charter. Fundamentally, this decision resulted from our inability to amend OMEC reservations to some provisions in the resolution. We are convinced that there was a need to adjust the draft resolution. The United Republic of Tanzania believes that diplomacy is the best way to end this conflict. To this end, we appeal to all parties to the dispute, to uphold human rights and their obligations under international law and humanitarian law, to de-escalate the conflict and give peace a chance. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of the United Republic of Tanzania. And now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of South Africa.
Thank you, Mr. President. And we thank you for giving us the opportunity to take the floor to elaborate on South Africa's decision to abstain on today's resolution. Mr. President, let me reiterate our position expressed during the discussions of the emergency special session over the last few days. Firstly, by highlighting that South Africa remains deeply concerned by the escalation of conflict in Ukraine and the regional and international socio-economic implications. We strongly urge all sides to uphold international law, including humanitarian law and human rights law as well as the principles of the UN Charter, including sovereignty and territorial integrity. Mr. President, the conflict involves two members of the United Nations in an armed conflict, which this organization has at its foundation the responsibility to prevent. The United Nations, therefore, must take decisions and actions that will lead to a constructive outcome conducive to the creation of sustainable peace between the parties. The resolution that we have considered today does not create an environment conducive for diplomacy, dialogue, and mediation. While we agree with and support the efforts taken by member states to bring to the attention of the international community the situation in Ukraine, South Africa feels that great of the international community the situation in Ukraine, South Africa feels that greater attention should have been paid to bringing the sides closer to dialogue. For South Africa, the text in its current form could drive a deeper wedge between the parties rather than contributing to a resolution of conflict. The resolution should have welcomed the commencement of negotiations between the parties. Additionally, the role of the Security Council, as well as the good offices of the UN Secretary-General, could have been given more prominence in the resolution. It is understood that one of the root causes of conflict is related to the security concerns of the parties. This should have been addressed in the resolution. Even though this emergency special session of the General Assembly is being held after the failure of the Security Council to address the matter, we believe that the Security Council should still be urged to play its role as mandated by the Charter to maintain international peace and security. South Africa believes that the UN, especially in the context of emergency special sessions, whose nature and significance speak to the gravity of the issues we bring before the international community, should be used as a platform to build bridges, address the divergence of views, provide recommendation and support for the parties to engage with a spirit of compromise while de-escalating tensions, committing to the cessation of hostilities, and building trust and confidence. Unfortunately, the text before us did not do that. South Africa will have also preferred an open and transparent process to negotiate the resolution today. This would have allowed all of us, as equal members of the Assembly, to present our views and ideally reach a level of understanding before the text was tabled. As member states of the organization, committed to global peace and development, we must continue to work together to promote peace. Gestures that merely create the impression of promoting peace without meaningful action will not assist. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of South Africa, and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Lebanon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Lebanon voted yes on this resolution because Lebanon, a founding member of the United Nations, believes in the purposes and principles of the United Nations Charter, especially the prohibition of the threat or use of force in international relations, the principle of non-intervention, and the peaceful settlement of disputes. Mr. President, these are not merely slogans for Lebanon. We lived through invasions, occupation, intervention in Lebanon’s internal affairs, and experienced devastation, loss, and pain that we are still enduring its consequences today. That’s why our decision today was not taken lightly. We know that, we know what happens in wars. But we also know that wars happen not only when people fail to prevent them, but most importantly, when the voices of war drown the cries for peace. Lebanon, a peace-loving nation, enjoys a good relationship and friendships with all parties to this conflict, with Russia and Ukraine, and in this spirit, we call on everybody to go back to the logic of peace. Mr. President, yesterday, a European colleague told me he has never lived through war. I was happy for him. I lived through at least two invasions: a civil war, multiple assassinations, and explosions. That’s why, Mr. President, I don’t want anybody to live in what we lived through. It’s time for diplomacy, for dialogue, and a peaceful resolution of this conflict. I hope that all my colleagues here in this GA Hall will put the same energy and commitment that was put to make this vote and its result a reality, to start working for a peaceful resolution that takes both sides’ concerns and interests into consideration, so the world will step away from this abyss of war. Mr. President, the preamble of the United Nations Charter tells us, quote, “to unite our strength to maintain international peace and security.” Now, we need this unity. Unity for peace? The United Nations is well-positioned to step up and step in to make this peace a reality. Now, we need to stop the escalation in words and deeds and help both sides to take the path of peace for the sake not only the two sides, but for the sake of our world. Mr. President, we in the Middle East are very concerned about this war because of its impact on Europe, but also because we know from experience what happens in Europe does not stay in Europe, that the last two world wars left deep scars in our part of the world, obliterated countries and hopes, and we are still living its aftermath today. I hope, Mr. President, we all learn the lessons of the last wars, and I hope that from this moment, we start working only for peace, peace in our time, peace in all time, as a former president of the United States said. Mr. President, I agree with Albert Camus in his speech upon receiving the Nobel Peace Prize in literature in 1957, that probably, and this is a quote, “every generation sees itself as charged with remaking the world. Mine, however, knows that it will not remake the world, but its task is perhaps even greater for its consist in keeping the world from destroying itself.” This is the same responsibility bestowed on us as the Charter instructed us to save succeeding generations from the scourge of war. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Lebanon, and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Malaysia.
Mr. President, as a member of the family of nations, Malaysia is committed to the principles and purposes of the Charter of the United Nations and the ideals it espouses. We reiterate the inviolability of the fundamental principles of territorial integrity and sovereignty of a country and peaceful settlement of disputes in the maintenance of international peace and security as well as global prosperity. All parties must uphold these fundamental and sacrosanct principles of the UN Charter and international law that guide the conduct of friendly relations between nations and peaceful coexistence. Many will agree that the resolution before us is far from perfect. While my delegation continues to have concerns with some of the language contained in the resolution, Malaysia voted in favor of it as a matter of principle and out of our strong conviction of the aforementioned principles. Mr. President, Malaysia values its strong and close relation with Ukraine and Russia. We believe the differences and legitimate security concerns of both parties, given the complex geopolitical context, must be addressed through dialogue and peaceful means in accordance with the principles of the UN Charter and rule of law. In this context, we welcome the direct talks held between Russia and Ukraine in Belarus and urge both sides to continue on the peaceful path to prevent further loss of life and destruction. From the vivid discussion at this emergency special session, what stood out glaringly to us as an overwhelming desire was an overwhelming desire for the current conflict to be peacefully resolved. The General Assembly has spoken with a clear and fervent voice on the matter today. Now, more than ever, the Security Council has to live up to its primary responsibility as the custodian of international peace and security. Malaysia calls on the Security Council to spare no effort in resolving this conflict. Mr. President, the future of humanity is at a precipice. Humanity must prevail, and peace is the only answer. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Malaysia. Now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Nepal.
Mr. President, Mr. Secretary-General, my delegation is distressed by the ongoing violence and conflict in Ukraine. Conflict anywhere inflicts stress everywhere. Nepal is a peace-loving country, as its soil is consecrated by the birth of Lord Buddha, an apostle of peace. For us, values of peace, harmony, and peaceful coexistence are our way of life, so they are supremely precious. Norms of world peace, respect for sovereignty, territorial integrity, and non-aggression, as enshrined in the UN Charter, are the fundamentals of our foreign policy. The use of force against Ukraine goes contrary to these values and principles. Nepal opposes this violation of international law and the principles of UN Charter. Mr. President, there is no alternative to diplomacy and dialogue, to building peace and sustaining it. Nepal welcomes the second round of talk between Russia and Ukraine. We urge both sides to continue the dialogue with utmost sincerity and integrity to resolve this conflict peacefully and find a lasting political solution for their enduring peace and peace for the Europe. Based on Nepal’s principled position on the inviolability of sovereignty, territorial integrity, and political independence of any state under international law, rules-based international order, and United Nations Charter, my delegation has voted yes on the draft resolution that was before us today. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Nepal, and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Iraq.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have requested the floor to justify our vote. Iraq abstained in this vote on Resolution A/ES-11/L1. Iraq regrets the deterioration of the situation and the escalating tensions between the Russian Federation and Ukraine, and Iraq calls upon all parties to settle this conflict by giving priority to dialogue and through the diplomatic means. And we invite them to go back to negotiations in order to solve their concerns and in order to safeguard international peace and security. And not to threaten the world with economic and political crises resulting from this situation. Iraq expresses its grave concern over the possibility for the terrorists of exploiting this crisis and the expected division in the international community. This would hinder the international efforts and our joint endeavors aiming at preventing terrorism and violent extremism. Iraq has decided to abstain because of our historical background in Iraq and because of our sufferings resulting from the continuing wars against our peoples. Iraq, and in principle, does not support wars as a settlement mechanism, and we reiterate that all conflicts should be settled peacefully in order to safeguard the lives of civilians. Iraq calls upon all parties to uphold the UN Charter and international law and emphasizes the necessity of safeguarding the security and safety of the international staff and humanitarian workers, and thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Iraq, and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jordan has voted for the draft resolution that has been adopted in order to emphasize the sovereignty of states and their territorial integrity and political independence, and because we believe that force should not be used in international relations because it goes against the provisions of international law and the UN Charter. Jordan hopes that we will be de-escalating tensions in order to reach a peaceful settlement of this conflict, and that both parties will sit together on the negotiation table in order to reach such a peaceful settlement. We also hope that international efforts will be intensified on both the political and diplomatic levels to assist the parties to end this crisis and in order to avoid the dire consequences that have arisen and could arise out of this conflict. And we would like to reiterate that all parties, and I insist, all parties, should respect the international humanitarian law, human rights, and the international refuge law without any discrimination. To conclude, Jordan would like to remind of the necessity of respecting the international law provisions and the UN Charter, whereas force should not be used against other countries and peoples and should not be used against the right to self-determination, and that a single standard should be implemented regardless of the region concerned and without any discrimination in implementing international criteria and standards. And we hope that this would lead to an effective dialogue inside the organization in order to implement this approach and to assess the current approach and to reach our common goal. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Jordan. We have heard the last speaker in explanations of vote after the vote. We will now hear statements after the adaption of the resolution, and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of the European Union.
Mr. President, Mr. Secretary-General, dear colleagues. Last week, the UN Security Council was prevented to act against Russia’s unprovoked and unjustified military aggression on Ukraine because of one isolated vote, that of the Russian Federation. Immediately after that, we initiated work to ensure that this body, where the countries of the world can all speak up, lives up to its responsibility. Over the past few days, the European Union has worked hand-in-hand with Ukraine and countries from all parts of the world to prepare the resolution just adopted. We thank all countries that have supported it. The decision is clear, the world has spoken. The Russian government must immediately stop the aggression, withdraw its troops, and abide by the rules of the UN Charter, as to all equally. Over the past days, the brutality of Russia’s invasion with the complicity of Belarus has reached unimaginable levels, with indiscriminate attacks against Ukrainian cities causing death and destruction among civilians in complete disregard of international law. Distinguished colleagues and friends, this is not just about Ukraine. This is not just about Europe. This is about defending an international order based on rules we have all signed up to, the sovereign equality of all states, large and small. This is about whether we choose tanks and missiles or dialogue and diplomacy. Today’s historic vote clearly shows Russia’s isolation from the rest of the international community. By voting overwhelmingly in favor of the resolution, we have chosen to defend peace where Russia has chosen brutal aggression. We have chosen to defend this organization and its charter where Russia has violated the fundamentals of both. Russia stands increasingly alone, the European Union, and the world stand with the Ukrainian people. Thank you very much.
I thank the distinguished representative of the European Union, and now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Denmark on behalf of the Nordic and Baltic countries.
Mr. President, I have the honor to speak on behalf of the eight Nordic Baltic countries: Estonia, Finland, Iceland, Latvia, Lithuania, Norway, Sweden, and my own country, Denmark. Mr. President, from all corners of the world, we have come together to send a resounding yes to uphold international law and the UN Charter, a resounding yes to the principle of the sovereign equality of all UN member states, a resounding yes to the need to respect the territorial integrity, sovereignty, and political independence of all UN member states, a resounding message to Ukraine and all Ukrainians. In the words of a colleague who spoke yesterday, “You are not alone. We stand with you today, tomorrow, and until peace prevails and Ukrainian sovereignty, independence, and territorial integrity are fully restored and respected.” We have also sent a clear message to Russia and to Belarus: Stop the aggression now, full stop. What you are doing is unacceptable. It is wrong. It is wrong. Your unprovoked aggression against Ukraine is a violation of the core principles that you signed up to when you laid the foundation of this very organisation, of this community of nations. Your invasion of Ukraine deserves our strongest commendation. You will be held accountable, and every legal avenue available must and will be used to hold the aggressor to account. You must stop the war immediately. You must return your troops to Russia. You must return to the path of peace, of genuine dialogue. It is not too late to stop. It is not too late to reverse the course. It is not too late for you to return to this community where we believe, with all our faults and imperfections, in the principle of the sovereign equality of all. Mr. President, we are deeply concerned by the grave unfolding humanitarian crisis. We demand that all parties fully comply with their obligations under international humanitarian law and human rights law, protect civilians and critical civilian infrastructure and ensure the safe, rapid and unhindered humanitarian access and passage. Humanitarian and medical personnel, as well as hospitals and other medical facilities, must be protected. Mr. President, thousands of civilians have been killed, more have been injured, and close to a million innocent civilians have been forced to flee across borders. Even more have been internally displaced inside Ukraine. They are in need of help and assistance without delay, without hindrance and preconditions. And we take this opportunity to salute and express our deepest respect, appreciation and admiration for the generous assistance and protection that Ukraine's neighbours have shown to all those fleeing the conflict, men, women and children from all corners of the world. Once again, we include by echoing the words of a peaceful protester who had written on her sign, "If Russia stops fighting, there will be no more war. If Ukrainians stop fighting, there will be no more Ukraine." I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Denmark. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Turkey.
Thank you, Mr. President. We thank you for convening this historic emergency special session of the General Assembly, a session that was called because the Security Council failed once again to fulfil its primary responsibility, a session that was convened due to the unjustified, illegal and illegitimate act of aggression against a founding member of the United Nations by a permanent member of the very organ entrusted by the entire membership with preserving peace and security, a session that was held as a result of the use of veto power by the very member that's perpetrating the aggression. Mr. President, we are obliged to reiterate Russia's ongoing military offensive against Ukraine blatantly violates the fundamental rules of international law and the principles on which this august organisation was founded, rules and principles that aim to prevent wars and protect mankind from disastrous consequences, consequences that we are unfortunately witnessing in and around Ukraine due to Russia's attacks. The international community could not have been a spectator to such an act of aggression. I am proud that as of today, it is not. With today's resolution, the United Nations emphasises loud and clear that it stands against egregious violations of the independence, sovereignty, territorial integrity and political unity of fellow member states. The membership is committed to preserving the Once again, we call on Russia the demands of the global community and heed its people's pleas to stop its military operations, withdraw all its forces from Ukraine, revert its decision regarding the areas of Donetsk and Luhansk regions of Ukraine and its annexation of Crimea, and return to diplomacy and dialogue without delay. We also reiterate our call for an immediate humanitarian pause. The peoples of the world hold their breath and wait with hope to see the march to the precipice halt. It is still not too late to go back to the negotiating table with serious engagement. Mr. President, as a neighbour and friend of both the Russian and the Ukrainian people, Turkey stands ready to facilitate the peaceful settlement of the conflict. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Turkey. We still have nine more countries, member states who wish to speak. Therefore, we have heard the last speaker in statements after adoption for this meeting. We shall hear the remaining speakers this afternoon in the hall at 3 P M. The meeting is adjourned.